Want to open the March 20th, 2023, meeting of the Board of Commissioners. And first of all, we have the invocation, Commissioner Brian Hams. If you would please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If you're so inclined, please bow your head and pray with me. Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, we just want to thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to be here tonight. But we want to thank you for your many blessings upon us as a county, as a state, and also as a nation. Lord, as we go through our meeting this evening, Lord, I pray that you bless us with the wisdom and the guidance that we need to make the correct decisions that will support the will of the people of Union County. And, Lord, I just ask for those that cannot be with us tonight, your special blessings upon that person as well. And again, in Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have the informal comments, and no one's signed up. Anybody want to sign up before we start? Anybody want to speak on any issue? Okay. Next, we have staff recognition.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion that we add a recognition for Deputy County Manager Michelle Lancaster to our staff recognition.
Okay. And we need to put that...
At staff recognition.
Just do it now.
Yes, sir. And I do have, if the board wouldn't mind, there's a couple other items I'd like for you to consider as well. I'd like for you to add at the information-only item, and this would be just a small presentation, Director of our Solid Waste Department Caleb Sinclair to come and talk to you about the Litter Sweep program. And then also, at the end of the agenda, if you wouldn't mind, adding, at the very end of business, adding an item where we can discuss future budget sessions. I'd like to work on that. I know David was not able to attend, so I'd like to discuss that if possible.
And you also wanted to add an item for...
Oh, yes, and for the condemnation. I'm sorry. That'd be...
Okay.
I believe you might have that.
So, make a motion to add... Let's, I guess, let's do the... We'll do everything at one time, changes of the agenda. Also, a motion to add to the business agenda, a resolution authorizing condemnation to acquire certain property or interest in property for permanent water line easements and temporary construction easements for the Crooked Creek Intercepting Phase Two project. So, any other additions to the agenda? Okay. All those in favor, those additions to the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. So, let's go ahead. So, we're going to go ahead and do staff recognition with Michelle first. Who wants to go with that?
I will take this. This proclamation recognizes Michelle Lancaster, our Deputy County Manager, upon retirement from local government for exceptional service. Whereas, Michelle Lancaster has accomplished an impressive 30-year career in public service through the university system and local government. Whereas, Mrs. Lancaster joined Union County Government in 2015 as Assistant County Manager before being promoted to Deputy County Manager, sharing responsibility for the overall county executive administration. And whereas, Mrs. Lancaster oversees 11 county departments, including serving as Executive Director of the Consolidated Human Services Agency. And whereas, Mrs. Lancaster is involved in numerous community and state organizations, as well as serving in leadership roles, including Union County United Way Board, the Union County Community Arts Council Board, the North Carolina City County Management Association, and the International City County Management Association. Overachiever. Whereas, Mrs. Lancaster has faithfully served Union County and its Board of Commissioners and residents by providing strong leadership, wise guidance, truest advice, and effective management over the last eight years. Whereas, Mrs. Lancaster represents the best of this community, often leading with her heart to implement positive changes that benefit the majority of our community and makes Union County a better place to live, work, and do business. Whereas, Mrs. Lancaster is highly respected throughout the state of North Carolina and has positively impacted thousands of lives by the programs that she has overseen and changes that she has spearheaded. Whereas, Mrs. Lancaster has announced her retirement as Deputy County Manager effective March 31st, 2023, after more than 25 years working in local government. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Union County Board of Commissioners expresses its sincere appreciation to Michelle Lancaster for her years of leadership and dedicated service to Union County community. Be it therefore resolved that this proclamation be made a part of the official minutes of the Union County Board of Commissioners, and that an official copy of this expression of our Board's appreciation be presented to Michelle Lancaster, to be adopted this 20th day, March 2023, signed by Ms. Lynn West, Melissa Merrill, Richard Hams, Sr., David Williams, Brian Hams, and Stoney Rushing. If you could, please come forward.
Well, let's get the vote. And what I want to do is, is all of us go down front, and please, Vice Chair Merrill, if you'll present it to... But let's get one on each side, and all the commissioners go down for this. So, all those... Any discussion on the motion? Anybody want to brag? Come on, let's brag a little bit. Nobody wants to brag.
I'll brag.
You'd brag. You'd brag for about 10 minutes.
So, Michelle, we were... I was heartbroken when we got the notice that you were going to retire, because I know what an amazing asset you have been, coming from this other neighboring county to the best county in North Carolina, Union County. And I don't know how in the world we're going to find someone to step into your shoes, but we just want to say thank you for everything that you have done for Union County, North Carolina. You've been an amazing advocate in everything that you have touched, so thank you.
Anybody else want to say something? I'll say something. It'll be a funny little story. Michelle, when we got this ARPA funding, we were all salivating about the ARPA money and where we could spend it. And I know where Michelle wanted to spend a lot of it, and I didn't necessarily want to spend it that way, so I told her, I said, "I'll get you my pretty and your ARPA money too," and she ended up winning, so... So, thank you again, Michelle. You've been a, you know, you've been an asset for me to be able to bounce ideas off of, and always it didn't bounce back, but, you know, at least you were somebody to talk to about it, and I appreciate your time. So, if everybody will come down front, and Vice Chair Merrill, if you'll hand her the thing, and I guess we've got somebody with a flash camera.
Do we want to, well, find the motion?
Oh, yeah. You said we had to...
Okay. So, you made the motion, correct?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. All right. Michelle, if you'll get the... I think this is the middle thing. You gotta hand it to them. Michelle makes us all look a little bit taller.
Everybody's cute.
One, two, three. One, two, three. All right, now, we've got another person needs to get in the picture. Where do you get it? Oh, you got your...
You want to come up?
Come on.
We got Grace into a horn meeting.
Awesome. All right. Let's see. Next, we have the consent agenda, correct? Anybody want to take anything off the consent agenda, or make a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. That brings us to business.
Actually, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Chairman, if you wouldn't mind recognizing Caleb Sinclair. He's our Solid Waste Director. He wants to just give you a little bit of information about our Litter Sweep program.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners and management team. I just want to point out that we've gone from the most decorated public servant on the planet to the garbage man. I don't know who stacked this one up. I just want to make a brief announcement. Again, my name is Caleb Sinclair. I serve as your Solid Waste Director for Union County. My staff manages more than 800 tons daily of solid waste for this community. In addition to that, we try to make an effort to get out on the road sides on a regular basis to remove some litter, to do our part to manage litter issues within our community. So, to that end, we have an opportunity to join the State of North Carolina. NCDOT hosts annually what's called Litter Sweep, which is a statewide initiative to garner volunteers from across the state to sort of make a push to remove litter, usually during the end of April. So, I'm happy to say that we've organized an event that will be open to volunteers from staff throughout the county organization to volunteer to help us on the road sides, mitigate some litter issues in our community, which is a problem not unique to Union County. This is a statewide concern and beyond. So, happy to help organize this and look forward to working with some of our folks that we don't usually get to see. So, thank you very much.
Before you sit down, any... What's the time period on it?
April 21st. We'll send out a sign-up sheet shortly. I believe we're going to start around noon to 2:00.
I'd recommend sending it to the schools, especially, I know, like, you, an academy charter school has volunteer hours for their kids, so make sure that you send it to all the schools, Union County Public Schools, so we can get that word, get some service hours. Maybe we can fix a way to do that.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Where's the litter queen? You didn't bring her with you tonight. Okay. Next, we have, in business, did you want to go ahead and do this other issue first or last?
We can do that last. Thank you, sir.
So, the facilities capital project budget update and a request to adopt capital project licenses. That would be Christopher Boyd. Christopher, while we're waiting, courthouse roof looks great.
Thank you.
Yep. You do all that yourself, or?
Yeah, just, you know, on my weekends, yeah.
You know what's been so amazing? And I don't know if we still have any or not, but those slates, they were fantastic, the slates that go on that came off the roof. That was a good repurpose. I think that was a Michelle Lancaster idea, so...
She deserves the credit.
Does she?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll give it to her.
Absolutely.
All the other credits.
Yeah. Thank you for noticing the courthouse roof.
Yes.
It was a big deal for us, and a big deal to do it the right way and make it a, you know, successful project, so thank you for noticing it.
Now, the courthouse cross, we're not putting it back up there because it tears the slates up, but have we got that?
I couldn't hear a question.
The courthouse cross, have we got that put back in yet, or?
So, it is back in the courthouse. We're trying to find an area that we can more prominently display it. Right now, it is in the room adjacent to the Heritage Room, which has some books and some office supplies. We're trying to clear that out and make it a little more presentable so people can come in and see it.
Does everybody know what that is, what we're talking about? Many years ago, there was a blue neon cross on top of the old courthouse, and it was so heavy that it caused some damage and water leaks and things like that, so they took it down, but the Gold Star Mothers had put it there. And it's, there's a plaque that says atop this courthouse is a cross, but not by the Gold Star Mothers, so now that it's back in. Have you seen it yet over in the other room?
I haven't seen that.
Yeah. It's amazing how big that thing is, and it looked real small when it was up there on top.
Yeah. And it's got some display concerns, just because it's got neon.
Right.
And so, trying to make sure that's safe for people to look at and view, and all that's going to be a piece of the puzzle that we're trying to work out.
Thank you.
Well, thank you all for allowing me to give you a capital update specifically related to some projects that we've recently bid. I thought I'd give you a quick overview on kind of what the construction market has been looking like and the bidding conditions, run through a sample of some of those projects, give you some of our results that we've seen as we've been bidding, which have been mixed, provide you with some recommended solutions to some of those bidding issues, and then talk about some allocation of bond premiums, investment earnings, as well as some donations that we're looking at for the Southwest Regional Library. And then finally, ask you to adopt the CPOs as part of this process. So, to start a brief construction market bidding conditions update, the construction market still is unstable. It's inconsistent. It's a lot of different things. It's hard to get everything under control and, you know, kind of forecast what's going to happen on each project. Pricing is still continuing to increase, but slowed last quarter, down to 1.6% increase, where it was around 2.5 to 2.2. An overall increase this year in construction material pricing, 8.29%, which is significant, you know, to all projects, because actually, that's just input to construction. You still have labor markets and everything else that increase as well. The good news is, is that it looks like a reduction from 8.29 to a forecast of 4.7 in 2023. So, we're hopefully getting back to recovery on price increases. There's still a shortage of skilled labor, which is impacting our subcontractor markets incredibly right now. It's hard to find subcontractors. It's hard to get hold to contracts for our subcontractors. We've, a couple of projects, we've replaced four subcontractors, so it's been difficult. We still are seeing supply chain disruptions, and so that is one of the biggest things that continues to impact our schedules on our projects. We've also had some bidding difficulties on our projects specifically, so, and it's really been limited competition and participation on our hard-bid projects. We've had to rebid several of our projects, or I'm going to say 75% as an estimate on our projects. We've had to rebid because we just haven't been getting the competition we need. So, it's still a market that is hard to predict, and it is impacting our projects. I thought I'd go through some of these projects, and as I talk about, these are recently bid, and whether they're under budget or over budget, later I'm going to show you exactly how much, so this is just a quick overview right now. The jail generator replacement project is basically replacing an old, unreliable generator. We recently bid it. It was under budget. We're hoping to start this summer and finish sometime this fall.
Is that the generator that came from Waxaw area?
No, it will be replaced with that generator. So, we're saving money through repurposing a generator from public or UC Water, so we feel good about trying to repurpose it because it's a great generator. It's actually a larger generator, which allows us to put more load from the jail onto the generator system. So, we're good about our project solution overall for that project. The jail washer dryer replacement, you can see in the pictures, are old, outdated, inefficient, unreliable, parts are hard to find. We recently bid that, too, slightly over budget, or over budget, but we anticipate getting started this summer and finishing up again this fall. The cell locks and controls replacement project is basically replacing all the locks on all the jail cells, all the secured areas, and the control system that manages those locks and those lock systems. Right now, those, it's old technology locks. We're going back with wedge locks that are, I guess, much more reliable as far as prisoners being able to defeat the lock system. Right now, this technology is becoming more and more problematic for the jail staff to keep up with those trying to defeat those lock systems. We hope to get started in this summer and finish about a year later. It's going to take a lot of coordination to, you know, moving prisoners here, moving prisoners there, so it's a longer-term project. And it did bid recently, and it was over budget, so I'll share those numbers with you here in a minute. The main library, we've got a small interior renovation. Basically, we'll put up some glass partitions to kind of separate the children's area, and that's to kind of keep the sound from propagating from the children's area, which is typically louder, over into the main library. It also will help us control and secure that children's area a little better than we do right now. Recently bid that. That was under budget. Construction start this summer and finish again in the fall. The main library exterior metal panels, if you've been to the library, you've seen, if you haven't noticed the metal panels, I'm glad you haven't, but they're in pretty bad shape. We basically recently bid that project. It was over budget, but, and we were going to have to rebid that. You probably saw on consent, a rejection of that bid. We found some irregularities in that bid, so we needed to cancel the bid and rebid it. But once we rebid it, we hope to start sometime September and finish in first of the year. Next one is the Event Center, the Simpson Event Center Support Building. This basically, the picture on the left is showing just where that building's going to be, and the picture on the right basically shows some of the things we're going to put in the building. So, if you, this is just a portion of what's going to go in that storage. It's basically going to be for storage, that's equipment, pins, fencing, soil mixtures, all kinds of things are going to go in that facility. Right now, we just don't have the space to do that. It's going to, we're currently negotiating a design fee on that project, about a 6,000-square-foot pre-engineered steel building, just like the Jesse Hams Park Event Center right now. Next is the Kane Creek Park New Camp Store. It's currently in design. Construction, we plan to start in October, if everything goes well with design and budgets. Finish sometime, it's about a year project, maybe a nine-to-10-month project if we're, if we don't have any long lead time items. It's approximately a 1,600-square-foot facility to replace the existing camp store, which is pictured on your left, and a rendering of what the new camp store would look like is on your right. It's kind of cabin-style with a wraparound porch. Progress Building, we currently are in our main, we've got, we've had a couple renovations. We're in our, what I'm calling, a main renovation that's in progress right now. We did get a TCO in December, and we plan to finish sometime in April. We already had economic development move into the facility once we got the TCO, and we hope to get transportation moved in sometime in the May-June of this year time period. Board of Elections, kind of a similar thing to Progress Building. We finished the new addition, and we got the TCO, so that part of the project is opened up. We actually have relocated staff from their existing space into the new addition, so we can renovate the old, old existing space. Look on the left, you can see the addition to the left and modifications to the front entrance. Don't pay attention to the orange, that's actually metal panels that we're waiting on right now that will go on there. And by the way, the metal panels for the library will match the metal panels that are going on this new facility. If you look on the right, you'll see some of what the interior renovation is looking like. It's going to be a great space for the Board of Elections once we finish up, and we plan to finish sometime in May. Then the Southwest Regional Library is the last one I'll talk about. It's in progress. The construction is in progress. We plan to finish it sometime February 2024 if things go well, and we don't have any long lead time items that pop out and, you know, get us at the, near the end. Picture on the left basically is showing you that most of the site works well underway. We're, as of last week, they poured curb and gutter. They're going to put down the first binding within the next three, four weeks. And then a picture on the right is kind of showing you that they're getting ready to pour building slab. Once that slab goes in, then all the steel works will start, so we're hoping in two weeks they get that building slab poured, and we can start, it'll start looking like a new building once, start getting steel to go up. So, as I said, I talked about the results of our recent bidding. If you look, you'll see the first project line is the generator. You can see the construction bid came in 249. We had almost 400,000 available budget, so got a balance of 145. The jail replace washer dryer, once you combine the construction bid with the equipment purchased, we're about $70,000 over budget on that project. The jail door controls is the most significant. That was over budget. You can see the construction bid came in at $2.7 million, and we had about 1.5 in our budget remaining that could have go towards that construction, so we're a little over $1.1 million short on that project.
Very quickly.
Yeah, go ahead.
That's just locks, not doors, or just?
That's just locks and the control system that manages the locks, the lock systems. Yeah, go ahead.
We need to quit arresting locksmiths.
What's that?
I guess we need to quit arresting locksmiths. Are the prisoners defeating the locks? Is that?
There are occasions when the jail staff has, has, it's been shared with me that they have seen some attempts to defeat locks.
Yeah.
And I think they are, you know, experiencing some significant maintenance issues, you know, whenever they're, you know, so they go and they try to, you know, lock down a cell, and the red light comes on, so then they've got to go, they've got to figure out, you know, what's going on. Sometimes it's someone trying to defeat a lock, sometimes it's just a maintenance issue. So, they're, they're dealing with a lot of different things on those locks.
I guess, wouldn't that be ongoing? I mean, wouldn't that be whatever system you had?
Well, the wedge locks are much more difficult to defeat, as a, you know, for prisoners to defeat, so I would say that the new technology on locks has certainly gotten better. This was a, you know, a, an old technology lock.
$2.7 million, Ben.
It's a lot of money.
Yeah.
It's no doubt, it's a lot of money.
Okay.
Next one is the library interior renovation. That one's favorable, so in the end, we will leave, we have a balance of about $138,000 to the positive on that project. The metal panels project is unfavorable to the tune of about $265,000. So, then we've got, so we've come to you with recommended solutions to how we can make these projects work. Our goal is not to request new funding, right, and try to manage our, within our existing capital budgets, a way to make all these projects work, and with as little impact as we can make to other projects. So, on the jail generator replacement project, we want to move $100,000 from that project line down to the replace washer dryer. That'll leave us with a balance of 45 in the generator replacement for change orders and unforeseen conditions, and then the, it'll leave us with $29,500 in change order money for the replace washer project. The jail door controls project, much more significant, so the first thing we'd like to do is allocate bond premium, the public, from the public safety bond premiums and investment earnings on those dollars, which are currently within our capital accounts now, $402,193. We also want to transfer $620,000 from a jail roof replacement project that's funded right now. That would require us to defer that project to a future year in our CIP. We've, and I should have mentioned before... So then we've got, so we've come into you with recommended solutions to how we can make these projects work. Our goal is not to request new funding, right? And try to manage our, in our, within our existing capital budgets, a way to make all these projects work, and with as little impact as we, we can make to other projects. So, on the jail generator replacement project, we want to move $100,000 from that project line down to the replaced washer dryer. That'll leave us with a balance of 45 in the generator replacement for change orders and unforeseen conditions, and then the, it'll leave us with $29,500 in change order money for the replaced washer project. The jail door controls project, much more significant, so the first thing we'd like to do is allocate bond premium, the public, from the public safety bond premiums and investment earnings on those dollars, which are currently within our capital accounts now, $402,193. We also want to transfer $620,000 from a jail roof replacement project that's funded right now. That would require us to defer that project to a future, a future year in our CIP. We've, and I should have mentioned before, we sat down, or we talked and discussed with the Sheriff's Office, all these solutions, and they were support in how we're moving this, this forward. So our plan is to do short-term repairs on any roof issues that, you know, come up with their existing Sheriff's Office repair and renovation funds. We feel really confident there's plenty of money in there to, to deal with that, until we can refund it back in a future year. We'd also, it's going to require to transfer another $200,000 from their R&R account to make up the $1.2 million difference. So that leaves us with about $100,000 for change orders and other things as we're moving On the library projects, we're looking to move $100,000 from that interior renovation over to the metal panels project. That leaves us 38 in the interior renovation and 23 on the metal panels project. We're also looking to move some library bond premium, $74,712, to the metal panels project, and we're also, we're moving the 100 from that interior renovation project and 115 from another county R&R account that, basically, we've got an emerging priorities project line that will cover that amount of money. So we also want to talk a little bit about allocation of bond premiums, investment earnings, and donations. The first project, because we anticipate, you know, one of the reasons I shared that we've seen an 8.29% increase this year, is that we anticipate some of these projects that are going to go out to bid, we're going to see some increased cost versus what we've estimated. At the event center, we'd like to consider allocation of $82,460. Again, looking to help offset some increase in construction costs that we anticipate. Kane Creek, the new camp store, we're looking to, we're asking for an allocation of 100,000 of the bond premiums for, from the Parks and Rec side to go towards that project. The Progress Building, we'd like to allocate $210,000, $118,000 from the general government bond projects, and that'll allow us some new scope items that include, we're looking at doing some overhead door improvements, so, you know, on the, I don't know if y'all have been out there, but we're looking, we've got a Sheriff's Office component, we've got emergency management component, and now we're going to have a transportation component. So those doors, there are two major roll-up doors that are controlling everything, all the circulation, we're looking to improve those doors. Also looking at some parking lot improvements, and then doing some safety barriers and marking, and some additional cameras and some other things with that allocation of funds. Board of Elections, we're looking to, or we're asking to allocate 150,000 in bond premiums and 50,000, a little over 50,000 in investment earnings on that project, and that's going to help us with some change orders that we've been seeing on the project, as well as some user-requested changes to, to make the project better and more usable. And then lastly, the Southwest Regional Library, we're looking to allocate investment earnings from the library bond, $99,589, and then we want to allocate 300,000 donations. Right now, the library foundation, this will become from the library foundation. Right now, they've got 175,000 in the bank, and we've put a target, and their, their capital campaign continues, so at the end of the project, we're anticipating about $300,000 that they're going to be able to donate to the project, so we'd like to get that allocated now and upfront. And then the last part of this is a request for board action on those CPOs. The CPO should have been included in your agenda, you know, the specific and all the numbers, but they match up to what I just shared with you. So with that, any questions?
Questions?
I just had one question about the, the roof at the Union County Sheriff's Office. With deferring that, was there any heat imaging done, like with a drone or anything, to, to verify that that roof can wait a year or two and postpone that project?
Yeah, we didn't do any, any infrared imaging on that, on that roof. We, we feel pretty confident, based on the number of leaks that they've been getting, that we can handle any of the future leaks for the next, I'm going to say this project probably is going to go either on 2025 or 2026 in the request to the board, you know, in the CIP when we get there. So we're, we're talking about a year to two years that we're going to have to deal with those leaks, but we feel pretty confident we can handle that.
Okay. I know that Union County Public Schools does have a drone with that technology to fly over rooftops to make sure that there aren't some issues with roofs. It might be worth a conversation, just to make sure that, you know, that roof can hold out.
Well, so I think that's a great idea, because Patrick and I have been talking about reaching out to the schools to talk about the capital improvements to the spaces that public schools use, that Union County issues to them, so I think we can have that same conversation, or include that in the conversation, so I appreciate that.
You know, with 53 rooftops, you know, they've gotten pretty good at sending the drone over and checking it out.
I bet so.
Okay. Just want to make sure that, that that project can be deferred.
Yeah. We feel confident we can.
Okay, thanks.
All right.
Question for you, sir. If you could go back to the Kane Creek Park Camp Store, I believe that we're asking for 700,000, is that correct? I'm sorry. Yep. So revised budget, 700,000. So I'm assuming that this is going to be more than just the building cost. This is going to be other things that go along with it, too. Is that, is that also correct?
Yeah, there's, so you'll have all your soft costs, which are design fees. Actually, one of the anticipated increased costs that we anticipate are site costs. Site costs are out of the roof right now, and so we're, and I can go back to the picture. You can see we're probably building this over a ravine, or it's not a ravine, it's actually.
You have the camp store.
Oh, camp store, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Right there.
Okay, there you go. Yeah, so, yeah, I think our, so your question was the 700,000, so why do we need 700,000?
Yeah, yeah. It seems a little bit high for 1,600 square foot, so I'm assuming that, you know, this would go towards other things that the building would stock.
Yeah, it sure is. Yeah, you're right, I'm sorry. So we'll, it'll cover our shelving furniture, because we are looking to have a pretty good customer experience, so we're going to have exterior furniture that's going to be on the porch, some new ice machines, new refrigerators, you know, a lot of different things that that 700,000 will cover. I think it's almost $130,000 in other, you know, expenses.
Sure.
In addition to the design fee.
The current camp store. Size, function?
The camp store?
Yeah.
It's, it's about 1,600 square feet.
The current?
I'm sorry?
The current one?
Oh, it's about 800, and it's woefully undersized. They can't even put some products, you know, out for sale, and they've gotten some, a lot of requests for adding product, you know, within that camp store. I was actually at the camp store, I want to say last week, middle last week, and the camp was packed, and I was actually very surprised, but it was a full camp, the campground. I mean, it was full, and there was a lot of people to and fro.
Jim's not, what's the income on that camp store? Do we know?
That I don't know.
Rough idea?
We don't know that, we can get you that information.
Yeah, we can get it.
I mean, I mean, again, if we put more product in to make more money, the profit, we're making there, loss, or is there profit or loss?
So, I mean, parks in general operate at a loss, but any additional retail that they sell will go to help parks budget, so it'll be an increase in revenue, but overall, parks does operate at a loss.
So, so we're, we're operating at a loss at the current camp store?
Well, we don't, we don't break out the camp store like that, it's part of the parks budget. We can probably get you some operation numbers on what it takes to staff that location and what we sell out of there. We don't typically break it out, but we can get you that information. We, we know what we sell out of the camp store, but we don't necessarily put the expenditures from a staff standpoint utilities for just the camp store.
Yeah. The concern I'd have there is, again, competing against local, I mean, you got their attention, you got their, there at the campsite. I've shopped at that camp store, you know, as long as I can remember, but, but again, if we're competing with Bass Pro Shop, we don't, you know, it's a camp store. Lot of money, you know, $700,000 if it's, are we putting product in there for that or just, you know, if we're putting the chairs on the porch, I got that, but, but that one, I would like a little bit more information, maybe, everybody feels comfortable getting a little bit more information on that one?
Yeah.
Like, like just the profit on the, on the sales of stuff. If we're losing $100,000 a year, I don't know if we need to big, build it bigger or not, you know, that's something I might want to look at.
Okay, we can certainly get some more information for you.
Director, is that okay?
Yes, sir. That's fine.
Can I get a, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Can I get an idea of the utilization on the bond premiums of the various issuances? I mean, are those, I mean, I know it varies from issuance to issuance, but is there going to be some leftover, or are these largely going to be used up with this? Can, maybe you speak to that better, Lee?
Yes, I would like to. So these bond premiums were generated with the sale that we did last year for the two-thirds general obligation bonds, which were for multipurpose. What he is asking tonight pretty much uses up all the bond premium that's available for county facilities. There is additional bond premium that will be available for South Piedmont and for Union County Public Schools, based on the percentage of the bond that was issued for those projects. We do plan to come back to you at a later time with a bond premium request for some South Piedmont projects, as well as probably recommending for the Union County Public Schools upcoming East Elementary and Forest Hills to use the bond premium for that. And the reason for that is you can only spend the bond premiums and the investment earnings for the exact reason you issued the bonds for, based on how the board adopted the bond orders. So you can't take a premium that was generated off of a school bond and spend it on county facilities, nor you can take the investment earnings from a school bond and spend it on county facilities. So the request tonight would eliminate any bond premium available for county facilities and any current investment earnings that we have earned on those proceeds for county facilities. So they are restricted in nature. What he is asking tonight is that you adopt the bond premium that we generated from the two-thirds bond for Parks and Recreation for the Kane, Kane Creek Park Camp Store and the Jesse Hams Park Support Building, because those are the only facility, type facilities we can actually spend that money on legally, based on how the bond orders were adopted when we issued the bonds in April of last year. Does that answer your question?
It does. Just one other follow-up to that. Have the investment earnings been significant at all in this rising rate environment, or is that pretty marginal in?
We have seen an increase. I will say the investment earnings that we're asking to allocate tonight are from the prior bond issuances from 2019. I'm not recommending that we allocate any investment earnings yet on the 2022 general obligation bonds, because we are in a rising interest rate environment, and we have a liability, because they're tax-exempt bonds from arbitrage, that if we start earning more, then we're actually paying back. That is an IRS tax liability that we could potentially hit and have to pay that interest earnings back. So it does get a little complicated, so the interest earnings tonight are from the 2019 bonds that we issued in August timeframe of 2019, I believe.
Okay, thank you very much.
So you're saying with our bond earnings, we need to spend it on the 700,000 for a camp store, or can we hold it for other future projects, or?
The 700,000, only 100,000 of that is being asked tonight for additional money. 600,000 of that is actually bond proceeds that we've already appropriated, that we issued when we issued the 2022, as the board then, you said, yes, we want to, we want to pay for this project with bond proceeds, so we issued the 600,000 then. We're asking tonight for you to appropriate an additional 100,000 of the bond premium that was generated from the same bond for the same project, to be able to finish the project down.
We didn't, we didn't jack the price up on our own, it was jacked up by the market, right?
Right, it's based on market. The bond premium is generated when you go to market, based on what the interest is for that day and the market, and we are watching that closely as we are entering the market now to issue the bonds for the school projects to determine what we can help with, if their costs come in over as well.
Any other questions? So you put your list back up? So we can get an information report from staff on the earnings of the camp store, right?
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you need these separately, or in a, in a one motion, or how do we need these, Mr. Attorney?
I think one motion.
One motion.
Yeah, and I think if, if the board is, is really intent on getting some additional information on the library project, I'm sorry, in the, not the library, but the camp store project, that you just actually bring, take that one out, separately on that one, and then you could combine the other ones for that, I think that might be a better way to handle it. I'm sorry, I don't see how that's written.
Well, I think what she's describing, I think just, maybe, it's $100,000 difference which stuff, which we got.
Yeah, so there are multiple projects on that CPO, because the original CPO had all the geo-bond projects on there for major infrastructure from the prior year.
I, I think we go ahead and do it, and then, so I'll make the motion that we adopt and appropriate funding for CPO 259A, CPO 277A, CPO 283A, CPO 284A, CPO 288A, and CPO 301C. That cover it? Jason, you the legal of us. All right? Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we go to appointments to boards and committees, and we've got, first of all, the appointments to the Parks and Rec Committee, Advisory Committee. We have six vacancies, and we have three who have put in their application for reappointment and none for new appointment right now. So I would make the motion that we appoint, I'll reappoint all three of those members, Michael Avola, Russell Hughes, David Corning. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee. Patricia Kinley, her term has come to an end, and she has submitted her application for reappointment. So make the motion that we reappoint Patricia Kinley. Any discussion or any others? All those in favor of Patricia Kinley, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Okay, next we have the future budget sessions discussion.
If you wouldn't mind, actually, the condemnation section, is that okay if we do the condemnation present? Thank you, sir.
That'll be fine.
Thank you, sir. Chairman, vice chair, commissioners, managers, thank you for the time this evening. I'm going to be talking about the Crooked Creek Interceptor Improvement Project, specifically Phase Two and the Easman Acquisition. Going to give you a, just a brief overview of the program, and as you know, with capital projects, they never stand alone, they're always part of a program, but then I'll dive down into the project itself, talk about the schedule a little bit, where we stand with Easman Acquisition, and then what is being requested of the board this evening. So the program overview, the Crooked Creek project really addresses the system, the collection system capacity needs. This project was originally identified as part of the 2011 Master Plan that was done by Black &amp; Veach, later reaffirmed as part of the 2015 INI study that was done by CDM Smith, and then, again, reiterated in the 2016 Master Plan update. As part of the improvements at the plant itself for influent pumping, headworks, and equalization tank, all that in accordance with the overall master plan. The interceptor improvements in the Crooked Creek Basin are broken out into a phased approach, so Phase Two is really the, kind of the building block for it, with future phases that would tie into that. Those are identified here on the next map. You can see the Phase Two project there in red. Phase Four and Phase Five are out in the future, and you can see those branching off kind of to the north and to the west of the main trunk line. Overview of the project itself, you're looking at just under three miles of pipe, about 14,000 feet. The size of the pipe ranges anywhere from 18 to 30 inches in diameter. It's going to be about 10 to 12 feet deep in the ground, and our construction schedule is just short of two years, running at 21 months right now. As I said, the project replaces an existing interceptor, because the existing piping is undersized and needs to be upsized for that build-out condition. Number of projects along that corridor, if you look back here at the map, you can see this is along the 74 corridor. The Phase Two interceptor is going to serve not only the commercial corridor here, but other residential or high-density multifamily-type projects that are underway in this area, notably the atrium health complex, hub hotel, and others. Generally speaking, the project runs between the existing Crooked Creek Water Reclamation Facility all the way up to Chestnut Parkway. Sorry. Our project schedule, we're looking at wrapping up design and permitting here in May of this year. Our Easement Acquisition, provided condemnation authority is granted this evening, would run likely into the early summer, early to midsummer, at which point we could bid and award the contract as we move into the third quarter of this year. Anticipate construction commencing in kind of late fall, early winter, November 23, and again, that would be a 21-month construction timeframe, so we'd be wrapping up late summer in 2025. And as far as where we are today, and I believe we talked about this a couple of weeks ago when I went through the Easement Acquisition Policy, a total of 45 easements from 35 property owners are needed for this particular project. To date, we've acquired 18 of those. We've had 22 that have been referred to our attorney for settlement, and then we have five that are in process. So we've had some alignment changes that have necessitated us to go back and update easement exhibits, redo appraisals, things like that. But the outstanding property interests, the 22 plus the five that are in process, are what's being requested for condemnation authority this evening. And here, you've got a listing just with the parcel ID numbers. So I realize I went through that fairly quickly, but I'd be happy to take any, any questions you may have.
Any questions on the presentation?
No, I would just ask this, you know, just for clarification, and it might be of use to the public here. The parcels that we're talking about condemnation for, we're not condemning buildings here. If you can just elaborate that, we're actually just doing easements, correct?
Certainly, and I'll just bring the map back up for reference. So you can see the red line generally follows a drainage wave, for lack of a better term. So as you come north out of the plant, we're running in rear yards, we're not going through buildings, we're not taking any commercial properties as you kind of head to the west over to 74. We're right along the frontage of 74, if you're familiar with that area, the majority of that frontage is actually a golf course, so we're going through that area, and then we come off, off of 74, coming behind the main commercial complex that's kind of at the southeast or southwest corner of Indian Trail Road and 74. So we're not going through buildings. There, we're going to be impacting some parking lots adjacent to roadways, along creek, creek lines, that type of thing, but no, we're not taking buildings.
Thank you. Yeah, I know that when you start talking about condemnation, it can be taken a certain way, so I wanted to give that clarification for the general public. Thanks a lot, John.
Certainly.
And this is going to allow for the ancillary projects around the hospital?
Yes, sir. The hospital complex is served by this interceptor.
A lot of commercial properties?
Yes, this is, I would say, a highly commercialized corridor.
And it goes along an existing easement? Just, we need a wider easement to put in parallel pipes, things of that nature?
That is correct.
Okay. I'll make the motion to adopt the Resolution authorizing condemnation to acquire certain property or interested in properties for permanent waterline easements and temporary construction easements for the Crooked Creek Interceptor Phase Two project. Any discussion on the motion? I want to have a little bit of discussion on it, in that we're in a limbo due to an action in front of the state legislature. The state senate has a bill that has a potential of taking away system development fees and also taking away local governments' abilities to have zoning over their own jurisdictions. So very concerned about that and how that might affect this project later down the road as we start funding it and we start building it. If we can't control getting the money back and getting our own zoning there, or the town of Indian Trail, Stylings, the other towns in that area, if they have, you know, a commercial property they want to do, and then somebody comes in and does subsidized housing or some other kind of project, we want to make sure that that doesn't happen. So while we are looking at getting these easements and acquiring these to move along in good faith of what we've talked to the state about what we're wanting to do, and at the same time, we have to be ready to look at the fact that those things may be taken away from not only us, but that they could be taken away from those towns as well. So this is a, don't take this decision lightly, but we do need to go ahead and acquire those easements if we're going to use them later down the road. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Now, we have future budget sessions discussion. Captain Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we had our very first board budget work session today at 3:00. Talked about EMS and libraries. It is important that we try to accommodate, you know, those meetings for all our board members, and I know that Commissioner Williams was not able to attend today. And so what I'd like to discuss with the board is modifying the schedule for future meetings to make sure that we have that available. Commissioner Williams has indicated that the 3:00 timeframe on Mondays is just not workable in his schedule. I know that did work for Commissioner Helms and Vice Chairman Merrill. So what I would like to propose is either A, one, the board could have on off Mondays that we would meet at 6:00, so that's Mondays where we do not have a board meeting, that's certainly an option, or we could add the budget discussions as an agenda item to your regular agenda meeting, I'm sorry, regular board meetings on the first and third Mondays. Obviously, that makes for a longer day, but that would make sure that board members would hopefully be able to attend that. So I'd like some direction on if the board would be willing to consider one of those two options.
Any discussion on that, or any ideas?
I'm perfectly willing to accommodate either. I'd like to attend these workshops and would be happy to do it either on an alternating Monday, or just make our regular meetings a little longer.
I think making the regular meetings a little bit longer makes a little more sense for the staff, because a lot of our staff may be having ballgames with their children they want to go to on those nights, and, you know, since they're planning on being here already, maybe, and tonight, we got through it pretty quick.
We did.
There's a lot less time, maybe an hour and a half of the budget session. So, you know, unless anybody has any objections, that's probably the direction we need to go in, is having it on the regular meeting nights, just after the, or as a part of the regular meeting at the end. Everybody good with that?
Yeah, a question. So how many of these sessions are we anticipating?
Michelle, how many do we have?
You have three more, so I would anticipate both meetings in April and one of the meetings in May.
Okay. And of course, obviously, if the board wishes more, we can always schedule more at any time, but that's, the plan is three more.
Now, we do have a meeting next week with the schools.
That is a joint meeting with the schools on the 27th? Yes, sir.
Yeah, but all the staff aren't required to be there, right?
No, sir.
Trying to give you guys a break.
Yeah.
Beverly, you'll have to be there, I think. Okay, so if everybody's okay with that, you don't need to vote on that.
No, sir, I just wanted to make the direction on that.
Okay. This is a little bit unusual, but, and I'll ask any commissioner that would like to do it, you know, Commissioner Helms, Richard Helms, is still feeling under the weather pretty bad, so if one of the commissioners wouldn't mind if you volunteer just to say a prayer as we end the meeting, Commissioner Williams, would you like to do that?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
If you're so inclined, Lord, we ask that you care for and extend your healing power over Commissioner Richard Helms. We know that he has been sick and is back in the hospital again, and no doubt, his family and his friends and his peers and the wider community are all concerned, and just, Lord, we invite you to work your healing power on Commissioner Helms. We invite you to deliver comfort and peace and just a spirit of loving kindness to his family and all those who are concerned for Richard. And we pray this in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, now, Commissioner comments? David Williams?
No comments tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Brian Helms?
I'll just say, reiterate once again, thank you to Michelle Lancaster for a wonderful career here in Union County, and all of your efforts for the betterment of the residents here. So thank you so much. Thanks to all of our staff. We've had a long day today with meetings, but certainly appreciate your effort as well. Thanks for all those that attended the meeting today. Certainly appreciate your participation. Thank you.
Again, I just want to say thank you, Michelle, for your many, many years of service in local county governments, and especially the work that you've done here in Union County. And we're going to take you up on your offer that we can still call you from time to time if we have a question. And it was wonderful to see your family here tonight to honor your good work. Thank you.
And I'll just repeat it, thank you, Michelle, for your service to Union County, and thank you for your time here, and good seeing your wonderful family here tonight, and appreciate all you've done. And again, to Richard Helms and his family, we wish a speedy recovery, to Commissioner Helms, and that God be with his family. So with that, I will take a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.